Let me restart recording. Okay, that's done. And nobody else is waiting to come in?
All right, not a surprise.
Why, it's not a surprise?
Oh, boy.
So why don't I officially open up the Planning Board meeting for Thursday, June 11th, at 2020? That's happening through, of course, the Zoom platform rather than face-to-face. I don't know if there's, well, just for the record, we'll ask anybody in the audience if they'd like to make any remarks to the Planning Board that are not on tonight's agenda. The night's agenda is fairly slim.
It looks like there's nobody from the public who's in.
Okay, thank you. So we all have everybody's name on the lower, on our screen here. I'm not sure if it's worth the time for us to go around the Zoom room and introduce ourselves. We do have three people from the Department of Public Works with us. David Valenta, who's the City Engineer. Rich Parzalati, the Cemetery's Division, Forestry Parks and the City Tree Warden. And Doug McDonald, the Stormwater Manager in the Engineering Division. Really want to thank all three of you for finding the time to do this with us. This is great to give us kind of a broad overview of the way the Planning Board sometimes interacts, overlaps with the Department of Public Works mission. So Carolyn, is there any other business that we need to address before we start with Mr. Valenta?
No, there's not. And we have some other items afterwards, but nothing that needs to be taken care of right now.
Okay, great. And David, did, I assume Carolyn briefed you a little bit on kind of what we're hoping to get at tonight?
She billed it as an open discussion, but I know that Rich and Doug and I have probably spent, I don't know, three or four hours this afternoon trying to gather our thoughts, make sure that we were able to try to present something to you. So we've been doing that somewhat independently. I did prepare a few short remarks, but I think the idea is that to introduce people that haven't been on the board for any extended period of time, what the DPW's role is in review of various, various projects. And then we would just open it up to questions. So that was my approach, if that seems appropriate to you.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, as always, we appreciate your, Carolyn's invitation for to have key DPW members come and participate in this open discussion. And we obviously also very much appreciate all of your volunteer service and willingness to engage in with development and sustainability projects and issues in the city. DPW reviews all special permit, site plan, and subdivision applications, basically to ensure that the proposed project plans and details are sufficiently clear and detailed to demonstrate conformance with all city policies and standards for city utilities, sidewalks, roadways, traffic, and public shade and significant private trees. So I participate in and oversee DPW reviews and collaborate with my engineering staff, the Water and Sewer and Drain Superintendents, and the Tree Warden to compile comments in the memos that we provide to the board through Carolyn. Doug is the Stormwater Manager, and he's obviously the primary reviewer for stormwater and drainage issues, which can be complex. And he'll be discussing that a little bit more in terms of the stormwater permitting process. And Rich Parzalati is part of, is the Forest, Parks, and Cemetery Superintendent, but he's also the Tree Warden. So in that role, he's reviewing all the issues, tree-related issues that come up with respect to projects. You know, my experience, I was reflecting back a little bit and realized that at least Carolyn, Doug, and I have been working together on projects with the Planning Board for over a dozen years, which is a bit of a shock at this point. Rich has gotten more involved in the last half a dozen years or so as things have ramped up in the city in terms of planting trees and focusing our efforts on preserving the canopy and replacing the canopy wherever possible. So over those 12 years, I've seen a lot of projects come and go, and they range from the simple to very complex. And I have to say, every project is unique. You know, it's interesting how things shift. Simpler projects can be a challenge because they're often lacking informational, information and/or professional support. And they tend to focus on the building and not necessarily the utility information, which is utility or tree information, which is what we're interested in. When comp, when projects get more complex, Carolyn convenes a technical review with the applicant. They're supporting professionals and key departmental reviewers throughout the city for an initial look at the plans and discussion with the proposed proponent regarding any apparent major issues that should be addressed prior to submitting the application. So that can be very beneficial for everybody involved so that by the time the proponent actually provides a presentation to the Planning Boards, the number of issues has at least been winnowed, if not completely reduced. I think it's interesting because my general experience is that proponents not being assured of approval tend to oftentimes limit the scope and detail of their permitting plans because they don't want to expend too much time or expense if for some reason they're not getting, going to get approved. So it's our role in a lot of ways to review the plans in detail and request revisions and clarifications that provide a permitting set with a clear representation of what's intended to be built. At the same time, we recognize that some details and comments will only get fully addressed once permitting is complete, which is why we often request that actual construction plans be submitted to DPW for review prior to the issuance of any city construction permits and have that as a condition of planning approval. The Building Commissioner obviously is also instrumental in supporting these submission requirements for both construction plans and then for the stormwater permit process, which Doug can talk about in a little bit more detail. That's really all I have at this point. I'd be happy to respond to any questions, but it might make more sense to just sort of have Doug and Rich say a few words about their view and their roles, and then we could just open it up to questions to any one of the three of us.
Great. I'll take over. I'm Doug McDonald, and can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, just making sure. I'm the Stormwater Manager, and my job in the city is to oversee the city's compliance with the EPA permit, which is a, it's called the MS4 Stormwater Permit. And that has a variety of things that we need to maintain compliance with. It's, we do public education. We look at, we look for illicit discharges to the system. We look at construction sites and make sure that they're not, they have erosion sediment control. We look at post-construction standards, which is what the stormwater permit gets into and what the, a lot of the projects that you see, we're looking at those post-construction standards, what's the system going to do afterwards? And then we also have to look at good housekeeping and pollution prevention, so keeping our system working well and upgrading it and over time and, you know, cleaning catch basins, sweeping the streets, all that kind of stuff. So, so my job is, is, is bigger than just the stormwater permit for development projects, but out of that EPA permit, we have a requirement to have a ordinance, a local ordinance that requires stormwater standards for new development and redevelopment. And in Northampton, it's the trigger for the stormwater permit is anything over one acre of disturbance, stormwater permit is required. And that, a lot of times, it's the same submission that, that you're seeing for the Planning Board. It's a plan set and it's drainage calculations and information for drainage. And we, so I review that based on, they, the standards for that are the same as the state standards for wetland permitting. We apply those to any project in Northampton that disturbs over one acre. And so the project needs to meet, the, there's three most important standards. The system, the stormwater system that's designed, has to be designed so that there's no more, the peak flow coming off the site after development is the same as before development. And that's for the two and 10-year design storms, but we also look at the 100-year design storm. And, and we're looking, more and more engineers are using better numbers for design storms. They're using bigger numbers because the storms are, as, as we know, getting, getting larger. And so they are responding by designing things with those, those larger, you know, inches per hour rates. That's kind of an evolving science. They're still trying to get to a standard that everybody accepts. So luckily, a lot of the engineers are using the new numbers. So that's for peak, peak flow. We also look at recharge to groundwater, so making sure that the system that is there replicates as much as possible, the water going into the ground as it did before the development. And that comes down to basically designing a volume in, in the, in the system to hold that water and let it go in the ground. And it depends on the soil type for the, for that site. You know, if it's, if it's tight soils, you're not going to get a lot of water in the ground, but if it's sandy, you can get, you can get a higher amount of water in the ground. And so there's, there's different rates that are applied to that in the calculations. And then the third standard we look at is water quality. We, the, the standard is that the system has to remove at least 80% of the total suspended solids in, in the stormwater. So it can be a range of, of things from rain gardens to proprietary systems that, that separate the sediment and, and then those systems have to be cleaned out. So we, the, another part of the stormwater permitting is a, a general push for low-impact development, for green infrastructure, for things like rain gardens and vegetated systems that do a better job over time of cleaning out nutrients and, and cleaning up the stormwater. A lot of times, it's, it's on sites that it's, it's hard to fit all those in, especially in the downtown area. So it's a constant sort of push for those kinds of systems versus, you know, underground systems, more sort of gray infrastructure, which do work, but may not work as well, may not be as easy to maintain. So part of, uh, part of the, the push for low impact development and green infrastructure, you know, we encourage, if there is any discretion with the Planning Board, to push in that direction for different sites. We do that upfront and try to get it done, but sometimes it's, it's, it continues to the, the meetings and discussions that you have. And that sometimes we condition to, to have more of that done. So then another thing that we look at is the long-term maintenance of the system. We require that an agreement is put in place that's recorded at the registry with the schedule of inspection and maintenance of the system and requiring, you know, an engineer to keep, keep up with the system and, and make sure that the maintenance is being done. That's a constant struggle to, to make sure that, that is done. We, it's kind of a work in progress, I would say. And that's why I think we really try to push for systems that are easier to maintain, easier to see if they're failing on the surface without having, you know, an expert having to open up a structure and really determine if it's failing. It's better if it's on the surface and we can see if it's not working. And the, another thing we're dealing with in the next year, the standards that the EPA is requiring us to have, implement for stormwater are slightly different than what DEP is requiring. So we have to reconcile those. There's a, it's, it's a little more stringent what the EPA are requiring. They're requiring for new development that the first inch of rain is, is recharged to the ground period for all impervious surface on the, on that, those sites. So that's, that would be a, a big change. So that, we're going to be working that into the stormwater ordinance over the next year, as well as some other changes to the ordinance to sort of bring it into compliance with that. And then...
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Is that, um, by changing the rules like that, are you going to find that it's going to be hard to manage, maintain? I mean, it seems like there's a, there's a value in sort of everything being the same for a long time. So that you can point, point to it and say, oh, you, you have to fix that.
Right, you mean the new standards from the EPA?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, it, yeah, it's going to be difficult to add in a different standard and a new standard, but it is, it's, it's required. So we have to do it. And it's going to be interesting to see how, how hard it is to implement that, you know, it's going to take some time for the engineers and designers and applicants to understand that they have to meet that new standard. And it may, for new development, may be a harder standard to meet. So we'll see how it goes. There, there's one option that we may consider that we, we haven't done before, which is allowing off-site mitigation for stormwater. So it's an option we, we can do. We don't know if we want to do it because it's complicated. But, so if a site can't fit in the, the stormwater system and the treatment on that site, they could build it on another site. They could build it perhaps in, you know, on another private site or on, in a city roadway if we have a project that we want to do. It would be similar to traffic mitigation funds that are applied, you know, in that general area. But we've got to work out some of the complexities of that and see if that's, that's worth doing. But it's going to be, yeah, those, those are going to be changes that we have to make. And then for small, projects under one acre, we also review what comes into the Planning Board, the stormwater systems. And for the projects, major projects, we look at the same standards, basically, that we do for the stormwater permit. As the projects get smaller, it's, we're not looking as much at, at, at all those standards. But we provide comments. We try to get operation and maintenance agreements in place, even if it's small systems, because these systems are only as good as the maintenance that's done on them and keeping them functional. So I, I think I covered everything I wanted to. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Doug, I have a question. The threshold of one acre of disturbance, what does that, like, include somebody building a single-family house but wanting an enormous lawn?
It does. We've had a couple with long driveways, yeah, that, that, that it applies to. So that's slightly different than the state standard, which exempts single-family houses for the wetlands and, and stormwater standards, but our ordinance pulls it in. If, if they're disturbing over an acre, they, we look at it as that impact requires a permit.
And disturbance doesn't just mean construction. It could mean landscaping or driveway or...
Right, right. And any disturbance, yeah.
Thanks, Doug. Yeah, let's, let's move over to Rich, and then we can kind of start firing our questions.
Thank you, George, and Carolyn, and thank you to the other Planning Board members. I kind of have a unique role. I have amongst the city's Tree Warden, but I'm also Superintendent of the Forestry Parks and Cemetery Division, so I have multiple roles. But my main function as a Tree Warden is to uphold Massachusetts General Law Chapter 87 that governs the care and protection of public, public shade trees and the public right-of-way. But under our city ordinances, in particular zoning ordinance, I have this little special caveat where I actually get to review all the plans, special permit, site plans that come in front of the Planning Board. I work closely with Carolyn. She sends me all the plans and I get to review them all. I also work with David and Doug in our own department to actually provide commentary for the overall package that goes back to all of you to review. However, sometimes my commentary comes directly from Carolyn, just because I, if I, I see there's something wrong with a particular plan or questioning something, I like to have Carolyn actually work with the applicant to correct it before it comes before you. So basically, you know, in these plans that are submitted to you, I'm actually looking to understand, you know, making sure that the applicant is complying with significant tree ordinance, making sure that they have an inventory that is accurate of the, of the trees that are on the property or that are proposed to be removed in the plan and the ones that are proposed to be saved, so we can make sure they're protected correctly. I'm also interested in the mitigation for the loss of the trees in these particular projects, based upon either their, their monetary mitigation or the replacement, to make sure that they're correct tree species and they fit within our, our tree list and planting guidelines, which we use to restore or replace the city's tree canopy. I'm also caught, also involved in actually making sure that the trees that they do plant within these projects are actually alive and well after, after, you know, roughly two years after the project has been completed. So, I mean, I, I, it's amazing. I guess, I didn't, you know, when I became the Tree Warden six years ago, it was, I, I didn't realize that I was going to be getting so much information that actually comes in front of you. So it's been very interesting to me. I've learned a lot, actually. So that's, I mean, it's, it, there's a lot more to it, I think, but it's kind of, it's a, I, you know, I'm very, I'm very, I don't know, it's hard to describe, but I guess I have a very passion for trees. I've been in the city for 30 years. I've worked here for 31 years, and I feel like this is actually where I belong after all these years. So this is actually great. And I have really great working relationship with, with the staff, with the planning sustainability and the review staff.
Thank you very much, Rich. Yeah, I, I know from my point, I think the other Planning Board members, it's, it's a, it's just a bonus to be able to meet the three of you because we often see your names on the bottom of memos and reports. And so now we can really at least place a name with a face when we're scratching our heads. So this is great. So I know that I, I have a number of questions, and I hope others do too. So why don't, perhaps the best way to do it is to be as fair as we can. We'll kind of go around the room and just ask each person to raise one question that you may have, or if you don't have something at this point, you could just pass to one of your colleagues so that I don't take up the whole evening. How about if we start with the sharply dressed fellow in the corner, David? Are you with us?
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry, not David Valenta, but David Whitehill.
All right, sorry. I'm in the corner. The other, I have a different grid view than you do, so.
I don't want to, I don't want to make anyone think I'm wearing a suit and quarantine. I, I don't have any questions right now. Thanks, George.
Okay, thank you. Dana?
Nothing for me at this point, but I'm very happy to meet and hear from all of you and appreciate you being here.
Okay, great. How about over to Marissa?
I am also listening and learning and very grateful for your time tonight.
Great, great. Yuri?
I think you'll have all the questions because I do not have questions now. I'm learning about it. So, hey, right?
Yep, okay. Krista, anything from your perspective? No, huh?
No.
All right. And Sam, you had one earlier, but...
Sam, unmute yourself.
It was this, do you find, is the soil, this is just a weird general question, is the soil throughout Northampton the same, or is it, I mean, is it just different from, like, one acre to the next or one half acre to the next? I mean, is it, can you, can you look at it and be like, oh, well, you're going to have trouble water?
It can be very different, yeah.
I'm going to see, I have to take...
There's a lot of areas in the downtown area that are underlaid by, by clay. Eventually, you'll get to clay, so it, it doesn't provide a whole lot of opportunity for water to get in the ground.
And then the next question is, are you finding that people, we've asked this question a couple of times when stormwater issues come up, do you find that people are maintaining these, these systems?
Some, some are, some aren't, some, you know, it's, it's going to prove, we're going to need to push a lot harder to get everybody to participate in me.
And I guess what is...
And, and, you know, luckily, a lot of them, they're not going to fail immediately. It's not going to, they, they work pretty well for a while.
And so if they're not maintained, what's the stick?
If they're failing, if they're really failing, we can go on and fix it and put a lien on the property.
Okay.
We also have some that, some systems that have credits associated with them in terms of the stormwater utility. So I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but I think that can be a stick as well as that we can deny, we can deny continuation of the stormwater credit until such time as they bring it into compliance.
There's also, in terms of the subdivisions, the older subdivisions still have, carry those responsibilities. So subdivisions that boards approved, you know, decades ago, have an owners' association, and there's a fee, there's a, a maintenance sum of money that's kept in reserve in case there's catastrophic failure. This isn't just general maintenance. This goes on sort of beyond what general maintenance would be. But that funding is potentially available if something has to be reconstructed after 25 years or what have you. Owners Association can dip into that reserve account to rebuild. But that's separate, that's a sort of separate conversation or discussion or understanding from the regular maintenance that's required of these systems.
Alan or Krista?
Yeah, I got a question. But the trees, the huge number of trees that are getting planted in the tree belt all over the city, which is a wonderful thing. I think that's just one of the greatest things the city has done for a long time. Who pays for it?
The taxpayer. So we, we have, we have a funding mechanism built into the DPW budget. It's $50,000 just to buy the plant material and all the labor, the... And all the labor that's associated with the plantings is virtually all from Tree North Hampton. Which is our five oh one C three partners that myself and the public shade tree commissioner are partnering with to make all these plantings possible.
And who waters, who fills the bags to water them?
So I have, we have one full time employee that works with me to actually water. Right now she's watering actually about the four hundred trees we planted last year, and then we supplement that with seasonal staff. So typically we have two people watering. Last year when it was hot, we had over seven hundred water bags out. Were watered trees that were planted three years ago.
Wow. Just out of curiosity, how, once the bag is filled, how long does does it last?
Probably about, it depends, probably six hours.
Oh, goes quick.
Yeah, it's goes quickly. They're very small holes, but it'll be empty by the next day. So six to eight hours. They hold twenty gallons. So you typically want to, in this kind of weather we've had, they have to have at least a minimum of twenty gallons a week. We don't really have enough staff at the moment to actually water everything twice a week. It's pretty, pretty impossible. Typically, after three years of a tree being planted and becoming established. It should be able to survive without having supplemental water. But of course, as you probably all recognize, our summers are much hotter and much drier than we are accustomed to, so. That three year timeframe actually may not apply. In every season.
And Rich, those, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
And it's and it's not, it's not personal at all, and it all related to the two trees on my tree belt in front of my house. But those, they have tags on there that say to to. Asking the homeowners to do that. So I've got two questions. One, is it possible to overwater these trees? And two, are you finding that homeowners are helpful with that or?
So so the tags that are on the, so the tags that are on the trees, we, last year we put a bunch of tags on the trees because we were struggling to actually get seven hundred trees watered. And we asked as many residents. As possible that we could actually communicate with to take some time and water the trees if they could. And your your question about overwatering trees, yes, it is, it can be detrimental to them. Typically. The problem with the water bags is that the water bags actually, if you overwater the tree, the water bags, it's a very damp and moist area. Underneath the water bag, so the bark actually starts to get very moist, a place where pathogens can get in, where insects can get in. A lot of communities actually stake their trees and they put the water bags on stake. Instead of the water bag on the trunk, that does a couple of things. It helps the tree actually to. Basically, it forces the roots to actually seek out the wet soil, so the force of the roots to grow. And then it prevents the trunk from getting those things I just talked about, you know, potential decay entry points and insects. Unfortunately, it requires a lot more personnel power to. Water all the extra bags, so we are unfortunately just using one bag per tree. And that's why I typically only go once a week and then obviously we watch the rainfall amount, but we haven't had much rain. Since really since April of this year, so.
I have a question here, just on the planting trees. You guys work with the nonprofit organizations? Because I have on my my street and adjacent streets, there is this nonprofit, they are coming and planting and doing the whole thing.
Where 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 is the, what's your street? What street do you live on?
Oh, so those trees, you, the city buy it or is they?
Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Yes, the city buy it. So we entered into a contract with a nursery. We purchased the trees. Here at the cemetery in the back, we have a holding pen. Where we, I, right now, there's about two hundred trees down there that we were anticipating to plant this spring. But because of the pandemic, we haven't been able to plant anything because of social distancing issues. So we're hopeful to plant all those trees this fall. And we, so we will take care of them over the summer. They're above ground. And then we actually identify the locations in the public right of way where we like to plant the trees. We stake them and we have to go through a permit process, an internal trench permit process. And then the day of, the day before the plantings, we'll bring the trees out there. And the volunteers come out the day, the day after and they plant with us.
All right.
So I want to move away from trees just for a minute. I I maybe this question is for David and certainly Doug and Rich chime in if you want, but. Through my experience with the planning board, we often rely on. North Hampton Sustainability Plan and that vision twenty twenty that took place quite a while ago. And now we're looking at a new plan around resiliency. And I think applicants, especially for special permits, have to reference our sustainability plan. Does the DPW in itself have a long term, any kind of. Planning manifesto, so to speak, that talks about kind of the capacity of our water systems or. Sewer systems, things of that nature, that would be helpful for the planning board to be aware of?
Starting in about twenty twelve. The director and city engineer at the time started looking at long term planning. And so at this point, we have detailed analysis and. Planning, understanding for separate utilities. There was a stormwater plan that was completed. Or stormwater analysis and plan that was completed by CDM Smith in twenty twelve, I believe. Doug, is that right?
That's right.
And then Tada and Howard did a. Water asset management plan for the water supply. Infrastructure in twenty thirteen and then in twenty fifteen. Kleinfelder completed a comprehensive wastewater management plan, which is the basis. Is forming the the basis for work that we're started doing down at the wastewater treatment plant a couple of years ago and we just. Awarded a ten million dollar contra, in the process of awarding a ten million dollar contract to RH White for phase one of. Of upgrades that are planned over the next twenty years. At the plant and at pump stations for, I can't remember exactly the figure, but we're looking at fifty sixty million dollars. At least over a twenty year period. Those plans. Did not necessarily take sustainability into account. I mean, we're dealing with hard infrastructure here for the most part that. Is necessary in order to maintain and provide the. The the utility infrastructure services that the city is used to receiving and. Would want to continue to receive in the future. We recognize, however, that sustainability is is very important and we certainly collaborate with. With other. Other departments to do what we can at our various industrial facilities to make them more sustainable and more efficient. We've worked a lot with. With central services and Chris Mason, there have been upgrades for lighting and various other. Other things at various facilities throughout the the DPW. I will say that the the current project for the wastewater treatment plant does take. Energy efficiency very seriously. Nonetheless, it is still an industrial plant and requires a lot to. To to actually operate. So does that sort of address your question there, George?
Yeah, kind of, you know, I was fortunate to be on the planning board about fifteen years ago and there was a lot of. Many more subdivision permits and Carolyn was there too in the outer reaches of Ward Six. And I think at that time there was a little almost hesitancy for some of, because we thought we were extending the water and sewer. And fire protection, a number of things, a little bit too too far far than we could manage. I don't think anything was restricted at that point, and certainly that's where some of the advocacy for infill came in. If we kept. Some of the development within the center of town, more or less part of our utility extension or. Overcapacity might not be affected, so.
Well, it's an interesting question. I think, you know, a certain number of the outlying developments are private. Wells and septic systems as as well. You know, the water system certainly extends further out than the sewer system does, but I will take this opportunity to say that the the infill. Developments have definitely been a challenge for DPW in terms of the. The capacity and condition of the older infrastructure downtown. I mean, we're trying to squeeze. A lot more into a smaller space and and that has created challenges on our end. In terms of what we have existing and what we can and can't demand of developers. In order to be able to accommodate that that additional infill development.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And I have a quick question. I think Doug. Made some good remarks about some of the stormwater retention plans and especially downtown, where there isn't room on the site. For rain gardens or other kinds of retention ponds, so. More and more designs are going underground, which to me always seemed to be kind of a ticking time bomb once they're paved over and. You know, other infrastructure happens on top of it, so. It would be good to know from you folks if we can support you at the planning board during our hearings on kind of. Pushing back gently on some of those or or I don't know, getting more information from other areas that in fact. These underground storage systems aren't as vulnerable as a rookie like I might think. So any thoughts on those, Doug?
Yeah, I think you're right. Every, it's always harder to 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 fix something underground if it if it does get messed up. But it's a lot of that is, you know, those systems can be well designed. It it all comes down to keeping pollutants out, keeping things out of those systems that might compromise them. And keeping those systems maintained. And that that gets back to the maintenance piece of it, that, you know, I think we. There's some that have pretty large systems, and if those systems were to fail, they would start to stress possibly. Add too much water to our our drainage system in the roadways near there, so it's it's. We need to keep an eye on those and and push harder and make sure. And and, you know, I think. In some cases, people are doing maintenance. We're just not hearing about it, but we're going to work harder in the near future to to get. You know, more information and and educate owners about the maintenance also. They may not even be aware of it. But it's it's hard to, it. Especially infill and downtown, it's just the space is always difficult. There's not as much, so 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 things are going to go underground. There's no way to stop it, I don't think. I, you know, I appreciate your. Willingness to push back, but it's just if they're meeting the technical standard and it's acceptable, you know, design. We usually approve it, but then it comes into, in the long run, how does it, how does it get maintained? How does it get?
I see Carolyn and Krista.
You can go ahead, Krista, if you like.
Oh, my question is, how do they maintain these systems? I don't know that I, I don't know that I'm aware of. What is, what does that look like? Is it like a pumping system or?
Yeah, yeah. So you'll see a back truck come out and and suck out the the, so there's sort of swirl chambers sometimes. They'll open a manhole cover, put it. Put a hose down and and pretty much back out any any of the debris and sediment in those systems. And then there's, they can open up. Observation ports and look down, see, is it holding water? Is there sediment down there? And they can also clean those systems out.
Great.
They, there's a lot of different ways to come at it. It's, they are underground, but they. I try to push for access, you know, manhole access ports that they can. Get, at least they can see what's going on. They can get the equipment down there after the fact and clean it out.
Thank you.
But in some ways, Doug, I mean, those are, those are private systems and I just realized in some ways it's sort of a parallel to a septic system. If you have a. Leach field that fails, then it becomes apparent and you basically have to dig it up and replace it. So. I would imagine there's probably a design life to some of these underground systems. We don't really know what those are yet because they haven't been in the ground long enough, but. My suspicion is that at some point they will begin to fail and the remedy will be that they have to replace it in kind or with whatever the. Current improved technology is, which shouldn't be any less effective and hopefully would be more effective by the time they have to do that. But that would be, that would be a private developer's burden because they assumed the risk of putting that kind of a system in in the first place.
And I was just going to add to that, what, Georgia, I can't remember who may have said this, but. One of the benefits of having an underground system is, you you know, we're talking about the difference between building. Or redeveloping sites that have already been built out and there may not be room, especially in town, or creating these vast. Grassy areas that will just be acres of detention pond that we need to. Accommodate and actually encourage different types of stormwater management that is not so land. Intensive in its in its use. And sort of related to that, Doug, you mentioned the. The first inch rainstorms that are. That EPA is going to be requiring the city to ensure that that water, that amount of water is recharged. That I think will have ramifications about how we deal with infill and what do we do in spaces like downtown where there isn't recharge capacity. Or other places where the soils just don't accommodate that. So I think that's going to have an effect on, you know, the planning board's role in terms of. What, how we permit. Projects, what we're trying to encourage. I mean, does this mean that EPA is pushing for more suburbanization so that we can. You know, deal with this new stormwater or is it really going to be only how we should treat more suburban areas versus urban areas? Do we have that capacity to differentiate between that?
I should add that it's, so the requirement is is to to treat, to recharge that one acre. And and the language is and or treat it. At a higher level than, so it could be a water quality treatment. If they can't recharge. So there's some flex, they've added some flexibility into there.
Well, that's good.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. I I do a lot of work in New York City where, you know, it's combined water sewer and and, you know, if you can imagine infill development problems. You know, it's, everything is over capacity there and they have pretty restrictive flow rates that you're allowed. So one thing that's come up in recent years is that is these blue roof systems. Which I've I've done a couple of them and they have some other issues, but, you know, basically developers will do anything they can to not have to. Dig an underground thing and and bear the risk of that. Is that something, I don't even know if that's code compliant here or. Or not, or if that's something you guys have looked at the implications of?
I don't know about codes. It's, we haven't seen it happen yet. We, I've I've heard about it in New York and other places, but. It's mostly along the lines of getting water out of the the combined sewer drain system, which luckily we don't have that problem. So a lot of times you're retrofitting an existing building with that kind of system. We don't have, generally don't. Have that, we don't require an existing building to to add something like that. But there, I I, there's some interesting systems out there, you know, just even a couple inches of water on the roof can provide a lot of store.
Right. Yeah, it doesn't do anything for your recharge, I guess, but it does.
Well, it slows it down. It's all in the timing. Yeah.
Um, the other thing that I've noticed going on in New York that I don't know. Is is a sort of a gaming the system kind of thing because of the expense of some of these systems. It's become really commonplace for civil engineers to to do what they call like a stormwater master plan, where they really like deal with every detail of everything that. The DEP there wants to see. there wants to see. But then, but it always happens to be that the current project only takes on the first half of this master plan, which is not very much in terms of stormwater. And that's become a sort of accepted way to game the system in New York, unfortunately. And is, I don't know, I doubt that that is happening in North Hampton, but is there anything like that that we should just be, have our antenna out for in terms of ways that the process can be used to, you know, people can get away with things that are not, you know, in the spirit of the law?
Yeah, in terms, in terms of stormwater now, I haven't, haven't seen that because we, we generally require a project to deal with the, meet their standards on their, on their site and as part of their project. You know, something like Village Hill that's been in different stages and different phases, it's, they, they also have met each standard along the way. So it hasn't, nothing's left, I'm aware, has been left undone. So, yeah, I haven't seen that.
Okay, great.
I, I will say that I, I think Doug is extremely diligent in his review of the submissions and that if there are questions about how things are calculated and what values are being used, he's very quick to push back on the consultant and ask the questions. So whether it's inadvertent or they're trying to slip something by, they don't get by Doug.
I try.
That's, that's good for us to hear. I'm not sure how the applicants feel about it, but it's great for us to hear.
But they managed to work with it. I think it provides a certain measure of frustration for Doug at times, but.
Yeah. If I could just switch to streets for a minute. I know the city's done quite a lot over the past three to five years around the smart streets with DOT, trying to provide more access for pedestrians, bicyclists to share a city street. I know that, I think the DPW has kind of a three, four, five year plan of what streets are being redone. So I just wanted to hear about your take on the smart streets kind of layout in the future of that. Given COVID, I know there's not going to be a lot of money, extra money out there for innovative things. Unfortunately, we've got to put an asterisk next to everything. But, and, and I don't know what that means, that your chapter 90 funds, which really depend upon for streets. But what is your, the, the current thinking of the DPW around new streets or improving streets and sidewalks?
Well, there's, there's a number of things. As you know, we have, we have quite a bit of inventory and backlog to try to work with there. The complete streets, which I think is what you're referring to, that's accommodating to all modes of transportation, pedestrians, bicyclists, and as well as vehicular traffic. Is that what you're referring to, George? Complete streets? Yeah, okay. So we have a couple of engineers, including myself, have taken some trainings with MassDOT regarding complete streets over the years. And we've been able to, to leverage that through the planning department into some, some grant money as well. I think Carolyn, I think there was, yes. So that's been beneficial and we've supported planning in that objective. There are some planning objectives as well that request the DPW in its street paving projects, look at the opportunities for improving that sort of access and providing more of a complete streets view. That creates a bit of a challenge for us because we have, on the one hand, a lot of demand for improvement of the roadways themselves and also the sidewalks. So we're caught a little bit in a crossfire between trying to get something accomplished and trying to get a project completely designed so that we can actually get it accomplished. In other words, we can put together a roadway paving project that usually involves some drainage improvements as well. But if we start to add on sidewalks and a full complete streets component to that, then the project balloons to be much larger and requires more funding. And then we limit the amount of pavement that we can actually repave in a given year. So we've, we keep all that in mind and try to do incremental improvements when we repave streets. But the focus over the last few years has been really to try to address some of the backlog in the worst streets. So we've done, I think, quite a very good job over the past few years. You know, if you try to drive around North Hampton in the summer, you just run into police details and road construction. So we are going ahead with one project this year, which is funded, which is North Maple Street and North Farms Road all the way to the Williamsburg Town Line. We do have another project that's already designed, but it doesn't look as though we're going to have the funding to be able to do that this year. I surprisingly did get an email and I don't know the outcome of the state senate vote, but apparently the state was looking at increasing chapter 90 money this year by $100 million. So if that actually comes to pass, that'll be, be really good news for us in terms of trying to get something, something more accomplished this year. I will say that despite all that, any MassDOT project is required to address all the complete streets components. We have a number of those that are about to begin in the city in the, in the near term here, which is the, obviously the roundabout at the base of the Coolidge Bridge that's underway now. And the Damon Road reconstruction is about to be, I don't, has been awarded, but it hasn't been, actually, construction hasn't been scheduled to start on that yet. And then we have a King Street corridor project from Bright Street up to Church Street that is a MassDOT project that the city hired the designers for. And that is going to be going out to bid in the next month or so. So we have a lot of good work that's happening in regard to that. And then planning has been working additionally. Wayne has a project out right now through the Community Development Block Grant to improve some of the handicapped access ramps at some critical locations in the city.
And David, don't forget about the biggest.
Am I missing something? What do I miss?
The biggest life-changing plan that's underway now for Main Street.
Oh, yeah. Something about that?
What was that, what's it up to now? $14 million or something?
I think that's the general estimate at this point, so.
So that's, yeah, I think the, I think we updated the board a little bit on the start of that big Main Street project. So that's, you know, a two-year, at least a two-year design project that we're underway. We obviously got delayed with COVID for potentially doing some test pilot project, sampling in the street of determining what, you know, what kind of elements of complete streets might make sense for Main Street. But we're still planning to do that in the fall. But, and added to your list, I mean, DPW did, went out and had a whole inventory of the sidewalks in the city completed, which helps to support funding or, or project planning for upgrades to those sidewalks, to sidewalks, which I think also helps in terms of planning board project reviews when projects come forward and we know it's on, in an area where sidewalks have been identified as, as needing replacement or improvement. That's a good piece of data to bring forward during that project review time. That's been helpful.
Well, thanks for that update. Pretty promising. That money keeps coming through.
We'll see.
Any other questions from board members, observations? Okey doke. Well.
George.
Okay.
This is a sort of broad question and we've talked about a couple of ways where this can happen, but no, I'm aware of being a non-specialist and, you know, the work that you all do is highly technical so that when we're getting, we're reviewing plans and we're hearing your comments, my basic sense is, well, you all know what you're doing and so you should just do whatever DPW told you that you were supposed to do, which I want to keep doing. But I've heard a couple of ways tonight that you've talked about, some ways that we might be able to, you know, engage with or support your work a little bit more. One might be in, you know, pushing a little bit for these, you know, more green infrastructure around stormwater systems and the sidewalk improvements that Carolyn was just talking about. Are there any other ways that, that you see our, our board's role, again, that we can kind of be engaging or supporting your work more directly other than just also kind of endorsing the importance of fulfilling the, the goals and the standards that you've set out?
How's your chance? Rich, I know you have some ideas.
I have always have a lot to say. I guess, you know, being a, being a tree warden and also being a certified arborist and having my own personal feeling, opinions about large mature public shade trees, and I think how we can do a better job as a community as a whole to try to protect them in some of these projects that come in front of you. Dewey Court is kind of one of them that has been, obviously, was a little contentious there for a period of time, that I believe is going to be coming back in front of you. But I mean, some of the, you know, listening to Doug talk about stormwater and one of the big pieces of, of these large mature trees is that they really are, they take up a tremendous amount, thousands and thousands gallons of stormwater. They also, you know, provide a lot of carbon sequestration, a lot of cooling, screening. So, you know, it's, you obviously have to weigh all of these factors when you're deciding to approve a project. But it would be, for me, it would be, sometimes I like to get way in front of the developer before they even put ink to, ink to paper in these projects and encourage them to try to look at the site that they want to develop and actually try to preserve the mature trees that are there to the best of their ability and still make their project successful. But try to preserve some of those large trees that we have in the city that unfortunately seem to get removed. We are fortunate enough to have the Sinipkin Tree Ordinance. However, you know, I, I think as time goes on, we've, we've all realized that, you know, the Sinipkin Tree Ordinance needs to have tweaks and we need to continue to review it because every time a project comes in front of you, you know, there's something a little different about the project, a little contentious. And I think it's important to recognize the fact that in the short term, you know, I'm, I'm fortunate enough to be able to plant, you know, 200 to 300. Last year we did 400 trees a year. However, those 400 trees I planted earlier are not going to actually sequester any carbon really in our, in our lifetimes, probably. It will be more for our children's lifetimes and our grandchildren's lifetime. So the large mature trees that are all over the city that are held in private hands, which typically I have no say in what happens to them, but you do when these projects come up. I think it's important to look at them from that perspective that they provide a lot of benefits to all the residents, not just the individual landowner or applicant or developer. And just kind of think a little more broadly about how important it is to try to save some of these trees. Or try to just ask the developer to say, look, you know, is there a way that you can preserve these trees and come back with a, a plan that's a little bit different than you presently have? You know, can you, can you reduce the amount of parking that's required? You need all these units in this, in this development, so on and so forth. So, but again, I mean, this is all, you know, we are in an ever-changing world and, you know, but I, I think we're, we're on the right path. But I think everything, you know, has to be reviewed and, and has to be tweaked as we, as we go forward.
Rick Fritz?
I have a question asked before, but Doug, you're here, so I'll ask it again. My kid is really into Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles. He wants to, and he wants to see the sewer.
That's awesome.
Can you, can you make this happen?
Well, I, I, I can't, I can make it happen with probably the, my counterpart, Mike Antash, who is highway superintendent responsible for the Sewer Drain Division. You also eventually, if we ever, they used to actually give tours of the different facilities.
He's four, though. He's, he's four, he's four years old.
All right. So we really need to keep this kind of simple.
Yeah.
Let me, I, I will do some, I was going to get back to you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. If anything else came out of this meeting, I made a four-year-old happy. That's.
A future licensed wastewater treatment plant operator. Janet, that was a good question. Thank you very much for raising that. Doug and David, I don't know if there's anything else besides kind of those mature tree. And we do have quite a bit of push and pull. All of the members, the planning board members can think up a couple of permits just recently where we went back and forth with the applicant around saving the tree and moving his house and, and it, and we didn't always come out on the positive side. But beyond that, are there other areas that we can help you? Good work.
I can't think of anything offhand. Can you, Doug?
Every project's kind of different, so it's hard to name something like that. But I, I think you touched on the, you know, for stormwater, it's the, the, the harder approach is to have lots of little, things like rain gardens on a site. A lot of developers don't want to try to do that because it's hard to do, they think. But I think in the long run, it's, those systems can work better and they're easier to maintain. But it's, it's one of those, you know, how do you make someone do that? And, and I think as the, the regulations change, it may require more things like that in the standards. But I think Rich, Rich's point about trees is saying, you know, it's, they, they contribute a lot to the stormwater, suck a lot of water in. The more trees we can keep, the, the better for the stormwater system. And that's, you know, it's, that's a hard thing to, to always accomplish, but it's, and, and a lot of those decisions get made at the beginning of a project. So it's, you know, is it education? Maybe it's, 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 you know, teaching people more about how to develop sites in different ways.
I think it's also important to understand that there are different, you know, different parts of the city may be, may need to be treated differently. We did a study showing that the per capita impervious surface is three times higher in the Ryan Road area, leads that area than it is in town. So we also have to look at that picture, like how much infrastructure, how much impervious area is there and how do we offset that with tree protection measures or other mechanisms so that we are balancing the need, you know, sort of comprehensively the issues of sustainability, making sure we're providing enough housing in the right places and, and sort of backfilling what we need in terms of ecological resources, where we need to do that to support development in existing neighborhoods, for sure.
Okey doke. If there are no other questions, perhaps we'll let the DPW reps move on to their regular lives and we'll finish up our small duties. Well, thank you very much. This has been great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, guys. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that was good. Yeah, as I said, just to kind of meet all of those and now be able to put a face to a name is really helpful. And I know Carolyn, you spent a lot of time with them and I think.
Twelve years, I guess, at least.
I think a little more than that. But yeah, we're, we're very fortunate to have those professionals, you know, to kind of back up our work. Other towns, you know, don't, I think, have that same kind of quality that we do. So it makes our planning board kind of reviews that much better and easier, yeah. All right, so we have a couple of other things on our agenda before we say sayonara. There's a vote to authorize planning staff to call a letter of credit for the Northview subdivision. Carolyn, you want to give us a little more background on that?
I will. So this is has a lot to do with stormwater management, actually. And your role in, I'm just going to give sort of background information. I know some of you weren't on the planning board when this subdivision was approved. But at Northview subdivision is one of the last building projects up at the state hospital. And it's a small loop road off of Usantie Drive at the end there, on the northern end. And as with every subdivision, including all the subdivisions that were approved at the state hospital, the planning board requirements or the subdivision regulations require that there be a financial performance guarantee so that the infrastructure that's proposed and designed is completed in accordance with the design. And and that as the project moves forward, that there's always this collateral that can be, that's in reserve in case something happens with subdivision. There are some instant, and then as the project moves on, the developer typically comes back and asks for reduction in that letter of credit. And we evaluate the what's left on the infrastructure portion of that and determine whether it makes sense to to reduce that number. I'm just going to pause here. David, did you have a question? You're on mute if you did.
No, I don't have a question.
Okay.
I had a question like, yeah, that was from 20 minutes ago.
Oh, my gosh.
No, I asked the question.
You did. Okay.
Am I supposed to put it down? I don't know how to do that.
Yeah.
I just lowered your hand and I'm sorry I didn't notice that before.
No, it's fine. I didn't. It was fine. I thought you noticed it.
So anyway, as projects get closer and closer to completion, developer asks to get the those monies reduced as they finish out the project. But there's always a sum that remains until absolutely everything is completed, just in case something catastrophic happens. The developer decides that he or she is finished and wants to move on and doesn't feel like taking care of anything. And so in this case with Northview subdivision, we've had some problems with the stormwater system. There've been, the the develop, the project is not complete. There are five lots left to be sold. Two of them are under covenant, which is part of the performance guarantee, which means the developer can't build or sell them until they've shown that they've completed construction. There's also an additional tri-party agreement with Florence Bank. The Florence Bank is holding about $200,000 in reserves. So we have $200,000 plus two lots as performance guarantee that the project will be complete. There've been some failures of the infiltration basin at the top of the hill because the site is not stable. And so sediments continue to fill up this temporary basin and then overflow because the basin is full and it can't infiltrate. We've been working with the applicant for over a year to try to stay on top of each rainstorm and make sure that these things get done. We think the original infiltration basin is probably not, probably needs to be replaced, dug up and replaced because of the constant sedimentation that's been flowing into the system. We've been trying to get this done since February. And more recently, sort of fast forward till the last month or so, there've been some other indications that the applicant has been non-responsive to us. So we are concerned that with five lots left and very little left of the subdivision that, you know, there, we've come to a standstill on getting these infrastructure elements completed. So we think it's prudent to relay the information to the developer that we will call the letter of credit, which of course, the developer doesn't want because it's going to ruin his credit, potentially with the banks. Many times, that's enough of an incentive to get the developer to go ahead and take care of the problem, finish off the project and get everything squared away. So we're hoping that that will help in this situation. But we feel like it's gotten to a point where it needs to be escalated a little bit because now there are homeowners living in the subdivision. They are dealing with this flash flooding because the system is not working. It's filled with sediment. So what I'm asking you tonight is just to authorize the staff to go to the bank if we need to. I'm not suggesting that we are going to draw down the money. And so what happens is we can go to the bank and say, we want to call this, what we want to, that's the term, we want to call the letter of credit. But we can't spend that money to make those repairs until city council authorizes us to use that money. So your vote tonight is really just to say, okay, we're going to hand it over to administrative staff to essentially get the ball rolling. So that's my request for tonight.
Motion's approved.
Is there a second for the motion to approve?
I second if I'm allowed to. I don't know if I am with subdivisions.
Oh, yeah. Not. Right. Thank you for remembering that.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Who was that? Krista?
Yep.
So just a quick discussion. Carolyn, is there anything in our recent kind of work, your work, where we've done that with a developer and approved effective?
So not since I've been with the city. Before my time, there've been a couple of occasions where we've either actually, it spurred, the bank has taken action and and been able to get their clients to perform the work. In other instances, the city has actually had to take the money, hold it, then hire, you know, the engineer and the and the contractors to go out and finish it. And the the only relate, and then the only other situation that's happened since the first subdivision that the board has approved since I've been with the city was for Ridge View, in which case actually wasn't anything involved with us. We got close to needing to put pressure at the ridge, Ridge View Road, which is way out on West Hampton Road, almost to West Hampton. In that instance, the bank actually took over the project. And they completed the project. So we didn't really, we didn't have to do anything, but we were sort of getting to that point.
Carolyn, just kind of a detail, that this, I assume it also deal with the road, which, as you know, is not completed.
Right. So that's one of the items that's not done. So what what happens is if we have to pull, if we have to draw the money from the bank, then we take all of it and it's set aside to complete everything. So to redo the stormwater to the extent that it needs it or finish it anyway, because it's been temporary, there's been a temporary system at the top of the hill. pave, put the trees in, you know, do all the final aspects of the subdivision that haven't been completed yet.
Great. Any other questions before we move to the vote?
Is this, is this going to, like with COVID, is this, or, I mean, maybe this isn't our our role, but is this going to cause, like if we, if you draw on this, is it going to, are they going to say, well, we just haven't had the time because, you know, COVID has gotten in the way?
Not in this situation, I don't think.
Okay, all right.
All right. Great. So you know, when when we have these Zoom meetings, we need to take a roll call and I'll go through the list and we'll say yea or nay when I call your name. So the motion was made to authorize the 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 Office of Planning and Sustainability to call the, to initiate drawdown funds as needed. So Jenna, no, I'm sorry. You're, I think you're in limbo. Okay. Krista?
Yes.
Yuri.
Yuri? How do you vote, Yuri? Yes or no?
Yes. No, I'm not limbo. I just did not agree with that one.
Marissa?
Yes.
David?
I don't think, I don't think I vote on this.
You're an associate as well. So, yep.
Okay, thank you. Sam?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
All right. And George? Yes. Okey doke. I didn't miss anybody on that. No. Okay. So the motion's approved to authorize the planning office to move forward with that as needed. Or to bring it to city council as needed also. Thank you. Next item. We had some minutes from our last Zoom meeting, the minute of May 14. Everybody was there except Krista.
Wait, was I not there?
Krista, does it matter? I approve them.
I know Sam, if it matters. But if that was the one with Karen Lavidia, I was there. Carolyn, was that the Karen Lavidia project on Jackson?
It was after that. Well.
This was, this was the one in Florence Street, the couple building a house behind their house.
Yes, I wasn't there. Sorry.
We missed you. Obviously, we we know, we noted it.
Vote to approve.
Who was that? Sam?
Yes.
And Marissa?
Marissa seconded. This was an interesting one, too, and Carolyn noted that in the minutes. Right when we came to vote on the project, unfortunately, Alan's internet went out. So he wasn't available to vote at that time. But fortunately, there was enough of a majority, one way to carry it. But that's one of the dilemmas of this Zoom system and our internet connectivity.
I have a bit of a conspiracy theory about that, but we won't go.
All right. All right. So the motion's been made and seconded to approve the minute of May 14. So we'll go through the list again. We'll start with Jenna.
Yes.
Yes. Krista?
Well, I'll pass. I wasn't there.
Okay. All right. Yuri?
Yes.
Marissa?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Alan?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
All right. And George? Yes. So the minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Last item is an ANR, our favorite ANRs on Federal Street.
Okay, so there's a house on the corner. Can everybody see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a, there's a house on the corner of Federal and Warner, 170 Federal. It's a large lot. The buyer would like to create these two lots off the back. They've removed a garage that's off of the existing driveway here. So they're 250 by 100 foot lot, I think, approximately. And they'll have to relocate this driveway because right now the way it's showing is a shared driveway, but there's a note on the plan indicating that because otherwise they don't have access until they have access from the street. So anyway, that's going to be taken care of. So it's just for the these two new lots on the corner there.
Okay. Quick question for Carolyn. Motion to be made?
Motion's approved.
Yuri, thank you.
Second.
Second, was that Marissa?
No, it was Jenna.
Then.
Okay. All right. Any discussing? Nope. Very good. So we'll go through our roll call again. Ooh la la. Jenna?
Yes.
Krista? Yuri?
Yes.
And Marissa?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Yes. Alan?
Yes.
Sam? Sam and company. Yea or no? Give us a thumbs up, buddy, or thumbs down.
Yeah, I'm mute.
Do your kids listen to you guys? I approve you. Go.
And George votes yes, so it's unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Carolyn, I have a question. It's definitely 100% for sure that we have to go through this roll call. I mean, can we just authorize something for the rest of the year? Avoid roll call?
No, it's because not everybody is visual, can see the board members if they're calling in. I think that takes, it just makes it much clearer who's saying yes and who's saying no. And especially with the time, you know, in Zoom, there's a little bit of a time lag. So someone might say something and it's not clear who said it. So it's important that it's on the record.
And if we just raise our hands, that can be a little dicey, too, I guess.
Yeah, we can practice.
We could practice.
Well, that doesn't help for people who call in and are only on audio.
Right. So.
All right, I'll move, move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Yuri. Any other items of interest to the board members before we adjourn?
I just have just an update. There is a meeting on June 25. I won't be staffing it, but Wayne will. So you have one permit hearing for that night, so we'll be sending that out next week.
Okey doke.
May I ask about the schedule for the rest of the summer? I know that in past years, we've sometimes gone down to one meeting a month. Do you have a sense of what we're going to do this year and if so, when those meetings will be happening?
Well, it's definitely up to you. I haven't, because of all of this new era, I didn't put the question out there to anybody about whether there were going to be vacation days or anyone wasn't going to be around. So I leave it up to you. I mean, we have a few permits in the wings. One's June 25. I don't know yet for July how many more permits there will be. We could probably consolidate down to one meeting per month if you would like to do that. That's not a problem.
Sure. We had also, Carolyn mentioned in her email to us earlier this week that we had, we were going to schedule some other discussions with city boards like we did tonight with the DPW. We were thinking of perhaps having a presentation by the Housing, the Housing Partnership and also the Conservation Commission. I found tonight's session useful. I would hope that we could arrange these other conversations, too, during the summer when it's not too busy.
Personally, I I thought that the presentation today, I learned from that. I want to rethink the field and the whole issue of infrastructure. And I like it. I like it.
Yeah, my view would be, I'm not sure that the meeting with the other boards would be as useful as it was tonight. I mean, obviously, every project we vote on gets input from the three people we just heard from. But that's not true of Conservation Commission necessarily. They make their own decision, don't make input to us. And the Housing Partnership is barely involved. So I would question whether it's. would be as useful as it was tonight.
Well, Alan, I guess I would push back a little bit and say, certainly from a housing point of view, it's good for me to have a perspective from some professionals in that field about what the housing situation is like in Northampton, what our stock is like, what our trends are doing. So when we look at permits, not often, those issues do come up. We're told that we need more housing for young professionals on Dewey Court, or we need this or we need that. And for me, I think hearing from the people who are in that game is very, very helpful rather than my trying to do that review. You're right, they don't provide direct input to any reports for us. Once in a while, they come to our planning board meetings to speak in favor or against something, but I don't know, I think both there is Conservation Commission and Housing. They have this expertise that gives us a broader picture of what's going on in Northampton, which helps me when I look at decisions.
I'm sorry, but does the Housing Authority deal with general housing? And I mean, I thought, I thought they dealt with.
Housing Partnership, not Housing Authority.
Right.
Okay.
Right. You're right about the Housing Authority, Marissa. They just deal with their own kind of projects, on their own residential units, yeah. Hopefully, they too understand a little bit more of this situation, but.
I mean, we had the Housing Partnership, or representatives from the Housing Partnership come to the Community Preservation Commission Committee at one point to talk, you know. I, after that experience, I don't feel like it's all that useful. I don't think they do that level of big picture plan. I think what they do is support every possible housing project that comes along because, you know, they're, they're in some sense that, you know, they're not a lobbying organization, but they basically are pro-housing everywhere. So I don't, I didn't get the sense that they have a huge amount of specific, you know, like the level you're talking about Dewey Court needs more young professional housing or something like that. You know, I don't, I don't see much of a value in that. I mean, they're nice people.
Okay, alright. And is that people's feeling also about the Conservation Commission? You understand their role, you feel like they're a kind of a separate silo and it's not really necessary to hear from them?
Yeah, I think no more than they would want to hear from us. I mean, they have their own jurisdiction and make decisions based on their own area and regulations.
Yeah, I guess I'm always looking for some synergy around some of the volunteer boards that do things. There is certainly overlap with those folks. You know, with the Conservation Commission, we see that often in our plans. But I understand, I'm not going to seemingly push my agenda if folks don't feel like it's an appropriate use of their time.
I personally would find it useful to meet with both. I think maybe a little bit more Conservation Commission than Housing Partnership, because we know that sometimes we're hearing about projects that they're also going to be hearing directly about. We've talked at times about, should we be seeing this first? Should they be seeing this first and so forth? So I think there is a little bit more kind of direct overlap with them, but nonetheless, I think there, you know, I haven't been on another board where Housing Partnership has come and presented. So I'm not opposed to hearing from them. I'm not sure the conversation would be quite as substantive or as long as tonight's was, but that's okay with me. I still think there would be some, some value in it and I appreciate you taking the initiative and setting these things up, George.
Really, sorry. With what you're saying, I agree with the sentiment of what you're saying of understanding where the sort of gaps between the seams, or wrong metaphor, I don't know, between all these committees are. With that in mind, in a sense, I think having ZBA, a conversation with the ZBA where we have like a lot of overlap, or it's very close. I mean, Carolyn is basically is that communication, but I mean, it would be maybe, I don't know what the format of something like that would be, to be honest, but I don't know. Carolyn probably could articulate it better than I could.
Well, I mean, actually, just tonight, the zoning board had a permit review for additional signs at the Starbucks on King Street. And there was a lot of discussion about whether or not it was appropriate to have additional signage on the King Street side. If you all may remember, this was the Coalvest project across from Barrett Street. So it includes, not, it's not just Starbucks, but it's a multi-tenant site that's being built. And the applicant made the, made a comment saying that it didn't make sense that the planning board went ahead and approved this drive-through. How could the drive-through exist without these extra signs? So why did the planning board approve it? Because the zoning board has a very different jurisdiction and they just look at sign. So it was kind of, I mean, in some instances, there's, can be a lot of overlap and in other instances, it's, it's less clear. But it's kind of ironic that that just came up tonight. And it sort of opens the whole question about, why is planning board reviewing a whole, all those details about the site and then the signs are completely in a silo, separate and go to the zoning board?
So did they get approved?
They did, but it took a long discussion. And I showed the, I, you know, they ended up looking at the landscape plan to see, to make sure that there was sort of screening of those new signs that were going to be installed. And so that was very helpful for them to see that whole site design that included lighting and landscaping and access and pedestrian access, which came up in their conversation.
And were the signs like the menu boards, basically?
Yeah.
Did mouse droppings in the windows come up at all?
You know, I didn't hear that, but I can go back and check the recording.
Well, that's because we, that's because we dealt with it.
Yeah. But I can, you know, whatever you guys want to do, I can reach out and have, if you want to have another board at one of the other meetings, I think we could still, you know, it might be simpler to have it at a meeting where you don't have permits, so you're just focusing on permits. That doesn't necessarily mean we need an extra meeting in the summer. So you guys can still decide to meet only once in July and August. And if you want to tell me the date now, that's fine. Or I can send out an email and a poll basically and say, you know, which dates are there most people going to be available?
Would it make sense to maybe, I mean, there's a million issues where zoning and planning intersect in certain ways, but maybe, I mean, I'm thinking of the two-family form-based code. It seemed to be the expertise, I mean, what you really want to know when you look at a code like that is like, where does it not work? And the zoning, ZBA are the people who know when it's not working, right? Because they know what's being asked, like when will people want to bend the rules?
Yeah.
So maybe keeping it more like focused on issue, like, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, but as a possibility. That might make it a more fruitful conversation if we were going to meet with them specifically, I don't know.
Yeah, or maybe in the context of when we bring the form-based code or, I mean, there are a couple of those codes that we're going to bring forward for the planning board to discuss. Also invite the zoning board in at the same time.
A joint session.
See you guys, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
So do you want me to send out an email to see what you guys prefer to, for single meetings in July and August?
Yeah, that's more efficient doing it here.
Okay.
Okeydoke. Thank you, Carolyn. So there's been a motion made and seconded to adjourn our planning board meeting. Any more discussing? So again, I'm sorry, Alan, but we need to do the drill. We'll do it as quickly as possible. Everybody unmuted?
Alan, if your, if your camera just cuts out and then it's just over, you know. What if we don't have a quorum?
You're in trouble.
Alright, Alan. Alan is a yes. We have one yes, Jenna?
Yes.
Yes, Krista?
Yes.
Yuri?
Yes.
Marissa?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Alan? And we already did, Alan.
He voted twice. It's voter fraud.
Why he has to vote twice?
I actually, I actually abstained.
My trial is out of control.
Alright, goodnight, y'all.